Meeting of Diamond Lake School District 76, roll call please.
Muntah, Hale.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Candela.
Here.
Juan, here. Lozada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. Hopefully our sound is better now that we're all on our own separate Zooms. So if you have any comments this evening on any items that are on our agenda, please feel free to put those in the chat box or the Q and A box, and we will read those into the meeting. And it looks like Nikki has joined as well. Okay, do we have any public comments? No, Eric, you're a mute. I just see you shaking your head.
I don't see.
There isn't any.
Okay. It looks like we have one now. They're asking if the agenda is posted. Yeah, it should be on the district's website.
And we also send them to the newspapers and they're also posted outside of our school office, our district office.
Okay, Eric, do you want to read the comments or do you want me just to read them?
That's fine, I can read them out loud. "Thank you for having the courage to make the tough choice. How can we help and plan for the next trimester?" And then, "When will we know what supplies, et cetera, we will need for incoming kindergarten?"
Would you like me to answer those, Mrs. Hale?
Yes, please.
So as far as the next trimester, we're going to walk through in our presentation tonight, our recommendation from a district leadership team to the board for their action and review, for their review and action. And we're going to share with you the timeline. We're hoping to go until December 18th, which is through winter break. It'll just be better, we thought, for the clarity of purpose, clarity and purpose of planning and preparation for our families as well as for our staff. So we'll continue to keep you updated to that. And then, I know Dr. Fredericks today was kindergarten orientation, so I'm sure you'll be sending out follow-up communications to all those families who have registered and came by today for what supplies they'll be needing and if, how the district can help if families can't provide those supplies themselves.
Okay. It doesn't look like we have any further questions or comments. There is, oh, there you go.
"Will we be able to get our money back for registration and supplies if we register elsewhere?"
If you do register, un-register from the district and decide to register somewhere else, you'll be able to get a refund. You'll just have to apply through your school office.
Okay. Okay, it looks like that's it for public comment. There is a second opportunity to comment on non-agenda items at the end of our meeting. So if for some reason you didn't have a chance to type during this opportunity, please just type in your comment during that, that public comment period at the end of the meeting. We will now move on to our business agenda, the first, or we will now move on to presentations.
Thank you, I'm going to just share my screen. Sorry about that. So as we communicated out to our families and our staff yesterday, we are presenting you with an updated roadmap for return to school. And for the benefit of our families, we have translated this in Spanish on each of our slides. Sorry, so we have kept our four priorities at the forefront of our decision-making throughout the summer since we've been put into the situation of what we're going to be doing as we plan ahead for our return to school. Again, safety, health and welfare of our students and our staff is priority number one. Making sure that we provide a rigorous and relevant teaching and learning experiences for all of our students. Making sure that we provide social, emotional learning support, connection and resources. And then ensuring that we have communicated clearly throughout this process. So at our last board meeting, which was two weeks ago on July 21st, we presented you with two options. The first one being in-person learning, because that is really what the Illinois State Board of Education wanted us all to do. They said it was the best option for us, obviously. And we all agreed to make those personal connections with teachers and students. And then we also provided another option for our families, which was the Distance Remote Learning Academy for families that weren't ready to send their students back. So I think after, not only just this, through the summer, but specifically the past two weeks, we've had some really thoughtful discussions with our stakeholders. We've reviewed carefully the staff and family survey results, looking at how comfortable the family feel, families feel about sending their students back, as well as how comfortable and ready our staff to come back, considering their own personal childcare needs and health-related issues. We've met with and worked with the Planning Forward Task Force four times this summer. And then we've been watching closely the consideration of the Lake County Health Department data, as well as working closely with our colleagues in the other Lake County schools. So based on all of those conversations, thoughts and discussions, we would like to revise and update our recommendation to the board this evening. On behalf of the district leadership team, is the one option of distance, full remote learning academy. And we're going to, going forward, we're going to call it the Distance Learning Academy. And again, for the sake of planning and preparation and providing consistency, as well as fidelity in our programs and continuity in our programs for our families and for our staff, we would like to hold this until December 18th, 2020. Unless Illinois transitions into Phase Five prior to that date, then we will make plans to adjust our, you know, adjust the Distance Learning Academy. And Distance Learning Academy will be facilitated, we also have an option, sorry, for a facilitated Distance Learning Academy in one of our District 76 schools for any students or families that may be in hardship, needing additional resources and/or childcare if they aren't able to facilitate distance learning at home. So just as a review, Distance Learning Academy, students will receive full-time distance learning through their assigned school. They will not physically attend school, but participate in school-based learning virtually from home. That instructional delivery could be live, could be virtual instruction, interactive videos, cooperative work, or independent work. And again, engage in instruction from a teacher at their homeschool and grade level. Now I'm going to ask Dr. Girak to just walk through what the Distance Learning Academy was like in the spring, the differences of going forward in the fall. And then each of the principals are going to talk about their daily schedule.
Thank you, Dr. Sharma Lewis. Yes, taking a look at this slide, we're going to just kind of rewind and look back to March to understand what had taken place when we moved into remote learning. I think it was March 16th, if I remember the date correctly. So the Illinois State Board of Education asked us promptly to redesign schools and transform education to move to a remote learning platform. At that time, we really had minimal time to plan and prepare. With that, there was some inconsistencies in terms of access to resources and support. And the state had put in place sort of its "hold harmless" clause, which sort of disallowed for attendance, or excuse me, yeah, disallowed for attendance and reduced accountability in terms of grading and participation. As we moved into the remote learning platform, it really, we were not, did not have the time necessarily for professional development, which I'll talk a little bit later about in the, in the future. And then, as many of you are well aware, we had several phases of distance learning opportunities, which we were continuously iterating and through trial and error to improve our process. The next slide really talks about what we are going to be doing. The next two slides actually talk about what we're going to be doing moving forward. So ISBE's guidance now moving forward in remote learning for the 2021 school year requires a five-hour instructional day with 50% of that day being synchronous. Synchronous is really a direct instruction between teacher and student. The other 50% of that instructional time would be asynchronous, which would be potentially independent work, self-guided, or assessment-related. Additionally, what we will see now in the, in the fall is we will have a return to traditional grading practices, much like we've seen in the past. Attendance and participation will be required and recorded. Back in the spring, in March and April, the instructional leadership team designed the Planning Forward curriculum, which recognized that in the future, we would be approaching some learning gaps based on students not being in school and in person. And so the instructional leadership team and the grade-level teams all developed a Planning Forward curriculum, which will be our focus as we re-enter schools to address those learning gaps. With some of the calendar, calendar adjustments which are going to be proposed, we have an opportunity to put in place best practices in remote learning and offer teachers professional development. Additionally, as the principals will, will share, we will have some consistent scheduling, a more consistent learning platform, which, which will allow for a more rigorous and robust curriculum. Additionally, recognizing that there are challenges that many families face, we have put in place a community liaison, which is Daisy Carrera-Rocha, who was hired on, I think it was about a month and a half ago, who will be serving to help support families in need. The tech department has made available to the parents who may not have internet access, internet hotspots. We will continue to provide food services, as Eric Rogers will provide. Additionally, as we plan for students entering the remote learning platform, we'll ensure that families are trained and are given training as to how to engage in that platform. And then additionally, we'll make sure that students have the necessary, necessary supplies to be able to participate at home as well. So this next slide just deals with the daily schedule. In keeping with the ability to provide the lunch program and then also transportation as necessary for some of our special ed students and those students with special services, we've staggered or maintained their traditional school hours. And so at this point, Dr. Fredericks will take over and discuss her unique building schedule.
Good evening, everyone. Well, one thing we know is that our young students, or really all students, do benefit from having a structured schedule. What our team has been putting together is a schedule that reflects both our virtual day, as well as when we return to school, what the day will look like. So we'll begin the day with a morning meeting, which is a time for the whole group to come together, to talk about what the day is going to look like, to share social experiences, and to practice some basic skills, getting ready for the rest of the assignments for the day. After that, our building will move into a reading, writing, and word work block. Our goal is to keep our students working in as small groups as possible, but with consistent staff members. We really want to build relationship with our families and make sure our families know exactly who to go to if they have any questions. Obviously, 8:15 to 9:45 is a long period of time. We don't expect our little kids to be online that long. What that indicates is that period of time will be our English or Spanish literacy block of time. So students will be working between working with an adult in a small group, live experience, or working independently. After that, we will have some social skills instruction. We use Second Steps Curriculum, PBIS, and Zones of Regulation to teach our young children the expectations of school, the world, how to be a friend, how to make good choices, things that we hope to have them carry through, through life. We'll have math at 10:00 a.m. for everybody. Again, our goal is to use assessment data to keep our students into smaller groups that, with learning goals targeted at their individual levels. 11:30, everyone will have lunch. 12:30, our students will have specials. Not all specials every day, but we do offer PE, music, art, library, technology, STEAM. So those will be scheduled. Parents will know in advance what is happening at what time. And at the end of the day, our classes will come together again for a wrap-up. Our pre-K program will begin with daily video-recorded instruction that we will send through families. We have received feedback that our families prefer to have something that they can play at their leisure. A lot of our families like to do that before bedtime, because I know our, our teachers like to read stories. And then we are discussing adding individual instruction for that as well. And then our early childhood program is a special education program. So the early childhood teams will be working with families to make sure that the individual distance learning plans are up to date and are, are convenient for everyone. So with that, I'll pass it over to Mr. Preble to talk about West Oak Intermediate School.
Thank you, Dr. Fredericks. Again, echoing Dr. Fredericks in that our students need to have a structured schedule, a consistent schedule. And what you can see here is in the three grade levels of the intermediate school, we pretty much have the same schedule for all three grade levels going through. We're going to start off the day with morning meeting and social, emotional learning, much like at Diamond Lake, where you start off the day, setting the tone for the day, getting kids ready for school, getting them available, what I would call available for learning. And just kind of setting up their day and making sure that they know where they're going to be going within the online platform and being able to navigate their day from there. We also will do social, emotional learning, because as Dr. Fredericks mentioned, it's not only important to learn how to be a friend at our age level. We want to make sure we're maintaining those friendships and growing new ones and not forgetting what we learned at our younger ages. But we want to make sure that we are instilling a community of positivity in our school, whether it's online or, you know, when we come back to being in person. We want to be able to have those opportunities. We also recognize that whether it's online or not, students haven't had, you know, school in a very long time. And they need to make sure that they're feeling comfortable with their learning. After that, we'll roll into our math block and then our ELA or SLA block. So much like Diamond Lake School, that English Language Arts and Spanish Language Arts time is a big chunk of time. Recognizing that these are the timeframes for the learning, but the synchronous portion is 50% of these, you know. So you're looking at being live instruction during half of these times and independent activities or assessment-type of activities during that other 50%. And we will work together as a staff to shape the, the insides of these timeframes. So it's not going to be, you know, strictly during that hour of math block. It's, it may not strictly be 30 minutes of live instruction, then 30 minutes of independent activity. It might be separated into smaller manageable chunks so that students can retain what they're learning better, apply something and then come back to the learning. So we're working on, on the internal structure of those time blocks over the next week. After lunch, we'll come back and two things are going to happen here. Students will have opportunities for a specials rotation. So within those two hours there, they're going to experience PE, music, art, STEAM. And we will also have what we would call office hours for our homeroom staff. So that will be time for teachers to meet with their teams, teachers to touch base with students if need be, teachers to touch base with families if need be. And also time for our specialists, who are going to be working throughout the day, additional time if needed to work with small groups or individual students. That is the intermediate plan. So I will pass it over to Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you very much, Mr. Preble. At the middle school level, if you look, the schedule should look fairly familiar, because it's our bell schedule that we ran in the last year. We'll be running this schedule for a few different reasons. One is continuity with what we do as a school and when we come back. It's, a lot of it is access to staff that teach multiple grades. We have staff members that teach dual language at all three grades, or some of our specials at all three grades. Another is that we want to make sure we offer our full course selections. And at any given grade level, we'll have a general ed, social studies, a dual social studies. We'll have really four levels of math being offered, three ELA intervention, Spanish, band and choir as well. And so we want to make sure students have access to all of those opportunities through the Distance Learning Academy. And it's a chance also for students to be interacting with who they're going to have in their class, should they be in person. And those cooperative groupings and working together are extremely important to any age group, including ours. And that'll be a focus. As mentioned before, we're going to be synchronous and asynchronous. We talked about that 50% of the time rule is kind of a general guide. It won't be an exact science. There might be a day where the teacher does a demonstration and, and then has students practice. And then they're working in groups to problem-solve, or to a joint web quest, or an online lab, or an activity to walk through that. So this, this avenue will provide that time by keeping it 45 minutes a period. The SCL delivery, we do have that scheduled during advisory time. However, we do have a bell schedule that we're working on that is called Extended Homeroom. That will also allow for smaller group SCL support for students. But we have things that we're pivoting toward. Newsella has driven a lot of our SCL, as well as PBIS in terms of expectations. But we have a lot to work on with students on etiquette socially and, and when they're online and just giving them the tools and skills and support they need during this time. Because middle schoolers are very, well, all ages are very social, but middle schoolers are certainly very social and need that time to interact with each other and teachers. And with that, I'll turn it over to someone else.
That would be me, Mr. Cunningham. Thank you for the great segue. That was fantastic. And so I will follow up just with some of the elements that I had spoken to earlier. As we move into remote learning, we're going to continue to use our D76 standards-based curriculum, which is internally designed, with the exception of the fact that we will be starting with our, our Planning Forward curriculum to address those learning gaps that we, we anticipate based on the fact that we missed the third trimester in person. All encore classes and specials will be provided. Again, and just revisiting the grading practices and assessment, we will continue with traditional grading practices. Local assessments will serve to help us guide instruction. We're waiting, obviously, for anything related to Illinois State Board of Education assessments, but we are looking into developing a remote learning assessment platform. And some information is pending regarding that. All of our special education, English learners and advanced learners will all receive those instructional per their individual schedule. So we anticipate being able to provide all of those services and those necessary minutes as well. And I think Mr. Dole had mentioned in his previous presentation that if there were minutes that were unable to be accommodated for in special ed, that they would receive additional minutes when they returned in person to accommodate for those minutes that were not, were not provided for. Additionally, as I had mentioned earlier, resources and training are going to go out to parents and families to help support remote learning. Staff will also be receiving the best practices learning, remote learning framework, which will walk them through some of the best practices in remote learning and also support lesson design and creation. We will continue our focus, as all of the principals had mentioned, on our social, emotional learning curriculum. Student supplies, resources and materials will be readily available. By the way, if you did order supplies through the PTO, just a little thing here, you're more than welcome to call the office and pick those up as well. And then, as mentioned earlier, Daisy Carrera-Rocha will be providing the community liaison support to help identify students and families in need and ensure that they engage in the Distance Learning Academy. And we'll certainly seek to identify students that are in need or experiencing hardship and provide them with additional supports.
And that takes us to our calendar. Obviously, all of these changes do require us to make some modifications to our calendar. And so we've looked at these carefully and we are maintaining, we're asking to start one week later to give us more time to prepare to go fully remote. So the alterations that we're listing are August 24th and 25th will be designated your institute days. ISBE, if you look on the bottom, which is the Illinois State Board of Education, provides us with five remote learning planning days that we can use throughout the year to help us plan for situations just like this. So we are designating August 26th and 27th, as well as November 2nd and November 24th, as remote learning planning days. So we have them in the beginning of the year, as well as throughout the semester, because we did say that we wanted to go through till December 18th with our distance learning. We are having August 28th, which is a Friday of that first week, Student Attendance Day. This will be when teachers will have an opportunity to make appointments individually with students and families, a Distance Learning Academy orientation. And that again, will be set up during the Teacher Institute Days. What does that format look like and communication will follow, but it will be considered a Student Attendance Day. And then August 1st will be the first official day for students in kindergarten through grade eight for the Distance Learning Academy. September 8th will be the first day for pre-kindergarten and early childhood students in the Distance Learning Academy. And Dr. Fredericks spoke about the formats of what those look like earlier in her presentation of the schedule. And then we have altered our late start days to the Early Release Teacher Institute days to, again, give us some time each month to assess how things are going, have teachers have time to plan, plan forward, look at learning gaps, articulate with their colleagues, as well as incoming and outgoing, and doing like grade levels articulation within the, within the buildings and within grade. So second grade could meet with third grade, third grade you meet fourth grade, especially like, what are the gaps? What are we missing? Are we addressing the items that we pointed out in the Planning Forward curriculum? And those dates are September 14th, October 5th, October 30th, November 2nd, and November 2nd, November 23rd, and December 7th. And again, those will be counting as Student Attendance Days. November 23rd, as we had mentioned a few months back, is now considered a federal holiday due to elections. June 4th will be the last day of student attendance right now is May 28th. So because of the four additional days that we're asking to go ahead in August, we are going to make up those days in June. And we thought that that would be the best option, because we're hoping very soon to, that time will be in person. And we would like to have those additional four days be in-person learning, if that could be possible, depending on the Restore Illinois Plan. We still have one institute day per the collective bargaining agreement and one remote learning day that ISBE has designated, that we have not utilized yet. So it may be used for future planning and professional development. Again, as we talked about, this is a very fluid plan. Information changes on a regular basis coming from our state, as well as from Illinois Department of Public Health and the Centers for Disease Control. So we just kind of stay, you know, on top of that. And so those are days that we're banking in that if we do need to either have meetings or pull staff together for any type of training, that we'll be able to communicate those out and modify the calendar within the August 28th and June 4th guidelines. And the board, you'll be asked to approve the calendar later on in this meeting, but those are the updates to the current calendar. And then, in closing, our next steps are, tonight, we are asking for your action on this current revised roadmap to return to school. Tomorrow, we have information that will be going out. It is also included in your board packet of the full, complete roadmap of return to school and the facilitated Distance Learning Academy guidelines and the application for our stakeholders. So that'll all be available on our website. In addition, we've added a frequently asked questions about what distance In addition, we've added a frequently asked questions about what distance learning is. It's very similar to what is put into this presentation. So parents and staff members can look at it at a glance because the roadmap is a full 10 pages. And then simultaneously going forward, we will identify and support families who need facilitated distance learning. We will determine staff placements again on would staff are safe to return back to school, create transportation routes depending on students who need transportation for facilitated distance learning. Students who need additional resources and supports at school will have those open here as well as safe places for students that are in hardship. We will provide professional development and training as Dr. Draca mentioned, getting ready for Distance Learning Academy. We will continue our meal distribution throughout the summer. And then once distance learning starts, it will be every day for our families to come and pick up or for the students that are going to be in facilitated learning here at school. We're going to continue to provide student and family trainings, resources, supplies and support to continue distance learning as needed. And then we're going to secure and schedule childcare options and save centers for our families who need before and after school care. So that is the presentation for this evening. If there are any questions from the board, I'm just going to stop sharing my screen so I can go back real quick. Okay. So if there are questions from the board about anything in our presentation or our plan.
I have a couple of questions. First off, thank you so much. This is, we, this is a plan that certainly addresses the place that none of us have been before. So really appreciate all the hard work and the hours that you and the team have invested in this. You provided the criteria for reaching your recommendation, which is great. I'm curious, what were the results of the survey?
You know what, at the time where we looked, which I believe was last Monday, it was 60% of families. It was a little bit higher. Mr. Hanson, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you could take a look at that, maybe we can address Mr. Lizad's another question. Well, if you could find that for us, that would be great. 60% did not want to return last we looked and than 40 were ready to come back for in-person learning.
Okay. All right. I'll move on then. The other question from, for the, on the technical side, can you just go over the opportunities that parents will have to test their environment, their connections, their systems ahead of the first day of school as well as if you can talk a little bit about the level of support that's available to them as, you know, they need to familiarize themselves with the supporting applications that are going to be used to, you know, not only, you know, register the child and then catch up and communicate bidirectionally.
I can speak a little bit to the first part of that question on behalf, I think of the district leadership team in that, in the, in the spring, we were able to put in place a pretty solid technology plan. I think Mr. Hanson would confirm that as well, that allowed us to address any connection needs that parents may have had. And so if there were connectivity issues or issues related to being able to access the internet, we did provide those services through hotspots and so on and so forth. And so with that, we received very little feedback from parents that were unable to connect. I think generally speaking, we felt pretty solid in that arena. What was the second part of your question there, Mr. Lizad?
Just curious, what, what type of support do you offer parents right now as they need to familiarize themselves with some of the applications that are going to be used, you know, to exchange information, to track and so forth?
Yes, that's really the, the beginning of our school year is intended to set up one-on-one meetings with parents and teachers to ensure that all of the platforms are in place for teachers and parents. So predominantly for the little guys and the, and the elementary kids, they need a little bit more assistance than the middle school kids who can generally speak, can be able to run things on their own for the most part. But there will be a focus on close connectivity with parents and teachers. And we want to make sure that we provide for the space and time so that those programs, those apps, Google platform, CSO platform are all addressed to ensure there's a solid program for remote learning. I hope that helps.
No, that helps. And I just want to go back to the first part of my question. What percentage of parents do you, do we have to have confirmed that they have connectivity? Or the inverse of that, what, what percentage of parents do, do still need, you know, to confirm that they have that level of connectivity?
From, based off of last year, all family that we reached out from our previous data confirmed that they have received a hotspot and are connected to the internet. We've ongoing communicating with families right now and with our per building, reaching out to families who have need to receive hotspots and we have assigned them based off of that. So it's going to be ongoing basis, especially continuous communication with families, letting them know that this is available. So, I mean, to answer your question, reiterating another survey or looking at the registration data of families that say they do not have internet, setting that aside, from continuing from spring to now, we've provided all families with internet hotspots and connectivity. And we're at the reevaluate as we lead into the upcoming school year with newer families, if that has changed.
What percentage was that, Eric? Wasn't that close to like 95% of families said they had connectivity? And there was, it was a very small portion, if I remember, that lacked connectivity.
5% non. A long time ago in the spring, we had a last board meeting sharing that information. We narrowed it down to exact families, we connected with all the families to offer internet hotspots and the internet deals that were happening during this time and getting everybody connected and everybody selected which avenue they wanted to solve the problem, which was either connecting to an ISP or getting a hotspot for, from us. And that's continuous still. We're still offering hotspots. I think a couple of families already picked up some over the past few weeks for leading up to the upcoming school year.
Okay, thank you.
Separate question, but it's a question ahead of time. We're at, roughly 60, 40, 60% of families that wanted to do distance learning as opposed to 40 families, 40% of.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, is the 60, 40, is that based on like the commitments that people?
Yeah, the Declaration of Intense Survey that was concluded on Sunday. Yes.
Thanks. Are teachers going to be expected to be at school or are they going to be able to work from home?
So we are going to be putting together a letter or a communication that goes out from the district office, basically recognizing and accommodating everybody's request to telework or work remotely. And if students, excuse me, if staff would like to work from the district, we're going to create schedules for them and they'll work closely on a case-by-case basis with their principal. But at this time, we are not requiring them to come in.
Okay. And then who will be at the schools with the students that need childcare or that need a safe space? Who, who is going to be like the adult taking care of them?
Right now, we haven't identified the staff yet because we're going to determine again which staff can come back. And so, once we identify how many students need that safe space or due to hardship that they need to come in for the facilitated distance learning, we'll determine what, whether those are peer professionals or what staff aren't able, aren't, are not able to teach. And then we'll work out a schedule that way. And what I mean not able to teach if they, if they do have free periods in their schedule that we're able to reassign them. But right now, we're looking at the learning associates. If they're safe and ready to come back and then we're going to put together a schedule based on need from the students.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a deadline for you to identify those students that need facilitated distance learning?
So the guidelines will come out tomorrow on our website and they'll also be emailed out. I believe the deadline we have identified is August 14th. But simultaneously, principals and staff members will be reaching out to families they know may need this additional support and communicating with them.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions about the intermediate school schedule. Um, current on there, I see that the English Language Arts and Spanish Language Arts for our dual language kids are in those blocks. But is science and social studies going to be worked into those time periods?
Yes, they are. Um, I would consider that ELASLA time, actually, let me back up a second. In, in dual language and SLA during that SLA block, science and social studies are covered on the side. So that gets rolled in there. So, you know, it's, it's a two-hour total block. Again, the ISB guidelines are for 50, 50% have to be synchronous, 50% have to be asynchronous. So it's how we, it's how we're going to manage that and build in time to bring social studies and science into that, into that time block. And that's, those are the things we'll be working on this week.
Great, thank you. And then I had one other question. Is band going to be, and choir going to be offered for the fifth grade students?
We are working on that right now with the, with the remote learning. We have to get a little creative with that. If we're able to do it, a little fall into those specials block. But I had a meeting with some of the band staff last Friday to kind of work through some ideas that we have. We have to look at choir too, but that is going to be a combination of where we can fit it in to the intermediate schedule, but then also respecting where it's going to fall into the middle school schedule maybe first. And then where there's time, we might be able to do that. So that's something we're working on in our logistics and scheduling subcommittee.
Okay, thank you. And then I just had one last question. I know that in the presentation, we talked about having training for parents to be able to support their kids at home. Obviously, likely this is, you know, technology training, but when are parents going to get information on when that might be available to them?
As soon as possible. I mean, I think, you know, once we figure out exactly what it's going to look like, and I know, you know, we're working together as a district leadership and we'll get that communication out as soon as possible. And I think that week is going to be, you know, critical while the week of August 24th, staff are involved in professional development, we're going to put opportunities out for parents to be involved too. And I think some of the remote learning planning days, staff will be facilitating that. That's what we're going to have them do is, you know, reach out to parents and what that looks like and, you know, sharing out that information. So it's all under development right now.
Thank you. That roadmap, for anyone who hasn't had a chance to kind of go through all of that, I think was really well pulled together. Like, I think it will answer, you know, most questions that parents have and it's a good resource for everyone to be able to refer back to. So thank you for all the time you guys spent putting that together.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. Going back to the facilitated distance learning, will you provide priority or will there be opportunities for 504 IEP students? And how will distance learning look like for them if that's not given? Like if in-person opportunities aren't given for them?
Mr. Dole, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, so we're, we've definitely been considering that and that is one of those categories that is going to kind of help put a student higher on the priority list. If they have a 504 and IEP, we're working with each of our building teams on identifying those students from the spring that had a really hard time getting connected, being successful, and then working to be creative as a team, looking at some of that, that Facilitated Learning Academy as a possible outlet to provide some of those supports. But really, it's, it's going to come down to each individual student and their needs and how we can utilize staff most effectively. So we're, we're in the, in the conversation stage of really identifying those kiddos and creating that plan.
Okay. And then a second question for Dr. Giraka. You know, standardized tests and assessments, they're not the only tool, but it is one of the main tools that we use to gauge student growth and progress. And our students were not assessed in the spring. And typically, those benchmarks would be used to place them into appropriate classes for the fall. So what, what do you expect to use to sort of gauge baseline data for the upcoming school year?
Yeah, so absolutely right. We're going to take a look at winter scores from the STAR Renaissance Assessment. And then what we'd like to do, and we recognize that being in person does present some limitations, but what I have been looking to do is do a, to present a remote learning assessment platform. And what that would allow for is potentially assessment days worked into our calendar that would allow students to take their STAR and Renaissance math and reading assessments at home, which would require obviously some time within the calendar. STAR, obviously, and the Renaissance platform has recognized that need moving forward with so many schools in the nation going to remote, that they're looking to provide that service. I have a meeting with them this week to understand and address those needs for us. So what I would anticipate, Mrs. Kwan, is that after we get kids settled and sort of into a routine and a ritual, that we may be able to provide a remote learning assessment platform that will allow them to do their fall benchmarks, which will give us a gauge, which I'm hoping will give us a, you know, maybe not a perfectly reliable and valid gauge, but it's a starting point for a gauge for where kids are entering. We can gauge their summer slide or their COVID slide and then be able to, be able to manage growth and progress as they move forward through the winter and then also through to the spring, recognizing that the best form of instruction is in person. We, we recognize that without a doubt. But we're going to do our best to provide a more structured and distance learning platform that has, you know, greater integrity with the hopes that we're going to see continual growth moving forward. And we will have the STAR Renaissance assessments to help measure that.
For next semester, after the holidays, at what point are you going to make a decision about, about either keeping full remote learning or going back to, or going to some sort of adjusted approach, whether it's a hybrid or, or, or an option for, for in-school or, or, or remote? Understanding that, that if in-school has, is a component of it, that we need, you'll need time to prepare for that. So I guess at what point can we expect you making a decision on that?
I think we're evaluating that situation that I think, I know we are evaluating that situation on a daily basis. You know, two weeks ago, we came to you with the plan of we're ready to go back in-person learning because we felt confident that we had the space, the resources and a framework to bring kids and staff back safely. Things have changed in the past two weeks where, you know, Lake County is reporting higher levels of positivity. Other schools, you know, in the area are also going full remote, just based on that data. It's happening throughout the state, you know, staff, you know, depending on their personal situations. We don't have the staff to fulfill having in-person learning too, as more and more information is coming back from their survey. So I think it's just something that we're going to continue to watch and monitor on a daily basis, get our guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education, get our guidance from Illinois Department of Public Health and the Centers for Disease Control. Just continue to monitor that, touch base with our colleagues in our networks in Lake County. I know some of them are giving, you know, six-week guidelines as well as 12-week guidelines. We just felt that giving families and staff the full 18 weeks, and if we can bring students back sooner, we will, you know, use the, you know, alternate planning days that we have in the institute days, you know, come to you and say, here's our plan. This is the most current information that's coming. You know, our state might be going into phase five as we, you know, hopefully cross our fingers or there's. fingers, or there's some other progress that we can say it is safe to bring students back, you know, whether it's slowly or altogether, or, you know, a gradual release. But we'll just continue to monitor that and give you an update at each board meeting.
Okay, but you don't think that there's a chance that you'll make a decision early for next semester?
I think there's always a chance.
Meaning, you don't think there's a chance you'd make the decision to keep remote learning early? You know, let's say, early before the end of this semester?
Oh, you mean to stop remote learning and go?
No, 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 to keep it, to keep it for the second semester.
Oh, to keep it for the second?
Meaning, meaning earlier, earlier, just to extend it for the rest of the year.
Oh, I think, again, my answer is probably the same. We'll just keep watching it and, you know, I'd love to bring everybody, my, you know, my big dream is that we go into phase five, we can come back after, you know, winter break in-person learning with, you know, specific requirements that are required by the state. But again, we don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know. But ideally, yes, I would love to bring them back, but right now, we'll keep it through December. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, no, that's fine. I didn't know if there was an advantage to sort of determining if in November, hey, we're just going to keep this for the rest of the year.
And we might, we might get information from the state that says there's no way in the next six weeks that we'll be able to pull off full remote or a hybrid model or, you know, something like that, depending on the direction they give us. I'd like to make that decision rather than later, just like we're doing now.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Do you plan on conducting a similar Q and A session like you did with the previous plan that you did, like virtually online for parents for the new plan?
Yeah, we can, and maybe that's a nice opportunity to get feedback on maybe what type of training or support or other additional information. But, you know, I'll write that down in my notes, but we can definitely plan on that.
And then if we remain in full remote learning for the next two trimesters, so say through the end of the school year, do you expect changes to the spring calendar? Like, will you need to add more institute days for teachers or remote learning planning days for teachers?
Right now, that's why we save them. You know, we have one additional institute day that we did not utilize and one additional remote planning day that we not utilized, so we'll keep those. So right now, I don't have the answer to that. My hope is no, but if we need them, we'll come back to you and see what we can do. And one other thing I wanted to respond to about the calendar is that we just got notification today from the Regional Office of Education that they're not making any determinations of final calendar requirements, the state is not. So as long as we have a calendar on file, they're keeping that because they're expecting things to change and probably have new guidelines or updated guidelines as information changes that involves. So we'll just respond to that and utilize the days that were allocated to plan if we can.
That makes sense, but I think for families, planning, you know, events or trips or what have you for the upcoming school year, I think it'd be good to know what to expect. For the schedule for the early release days, do you have sample schedules for that for each of the buildings at this time?
We changed the early release days to late start days, so they're on our website, and we were planning on when we send out an updated calendar, once the board approves it, we'll add those times back in there for the school year, but they're the same as last year.
Okay.
I know there's some question and comments from the public, and our board secretaries are taking notes, and I will respond back to the family members personally. And I think there were some staff members that also had some questions. Please know that there will be information coming out in the district that will, from the district that will address those questions about scheduling and requirements for work. So we're going to address those at a different time.
Okay, so then if, does anyone else from the board have any other questions? Okay, then we will move on to our business agenda for the evening. The first item on the business agenda for this evening is the omnibus vote agenda. Items under the omnibus vote agenda are considered routine and/or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff, administrator, assistant wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus vote agenda and voted on separately. We will vote on this at our next meeting, which is on August 25th. The next item on the business agenda is the reviewing the resolution for student meal prices. Eric, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, so this is the annual requirement we have from the Illinois State Board of Education, and it's really as part of our national school lunch program participation that we're required to annually review student meal prices. And really, we use a Department of Agriculture calculator, if you will, on what we should be charging for prices. So I report back on what we had prices, they'll let us know if we need to have an incremental increase, and we decide whether we could round up and down. So right now, the requirement stating that we have to move our meal prices up to $3.05, which is a five cent increase. I will point out that this is just a posted meal price. Depending on our approval, we may be able to continue. We were part of what they referred as a seamless summer food service program, which allowed us to serve free meals to students. So we're still hoping to have participation in that, and we're just still waiting guidance. So this will be our posted meal price until we do hear further information from the state.
Okay, and then is the milk pricing is separate?
That's only if you're going to get an additional milk. The lunch does come with that, and breakfast will still remain free as we did the beginning of last year.
Okay.
So this is just for information, it'll go for approval at the next board meeting.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Okay, the next few items are for action. The first item being the resolution to approve tentative budget and set the budget hearing date. Whereas ILSC 105-5/17-1 directs the board to provide at least one public hearing prior to final action on the budget, and whereas notice of the public hearing must be published in a local newspaper at least 30 days prior to the time of hearing. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Board of Education approves the 2020-2021 tentative budget as presented and sets September 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM as the date for the public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget. And I realize as I was reading that, that maybe you wanted to give your presentation.
Wait, are we voting on the meal plan price first?
No, that's for next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm just going to give a really condensed presentation because...
Yeah, that's fine. I'm sorry, there's so many links I'm looking at. I, my eye goes to the resolution first.
I'm really just going to call out a couple of things. I mean, first and foremost, the most important thing is, is if a board member has any questions about the links, I encourage you to reach out. We could schedule a virtual meeting to go over all the specifics of the presentation itself. The presentation is just, serves as a summary overview of all those other internal documents, and they consist of five-year projections. I have a link in there just for some general assumptions based on how the COVID virus is going to impact potential future expenditures and revenues. And I do have a little bit of a detailed document as far as what some assumptions I'm making. We will be going over the present, so the purpose of this is to approve or posting of the budget, and these will be posted for 30 days prior to being voted on. So at the September board meeting, we'll be able to, I'll go over the full presentation as part of the public hearing. But I'll just call out a couple of different, you know, things as part of the presentation. If Mr. Hanson, you wouldn't mind posting that? I guess it'd be a little bit easier if I, if I had control over it, but if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Again, what is a budget? How I can kind of, I've gone over that every single year, but the district's held to the Illinois Program Accounting Manual, and we're required to do fund-based budgeting, so you can kind of go on to some other slides, Eric. And this summary of our funds. So really, the interesting assumption this year is, based on the COVID virus, the school Illinois Board of Ed is frozen general state aid funding. So the positive is it's not decreasing, the negative is it has an increase like it has based on the promise of the evidence-based funding formula. So the odd thing is, is you're noticing I'm showing a little bit of a surplus in the operating funds. If you go on the next slide, I'll point out why, and again, this is a summary of the next five years, I'm projecting some surplus and deficit numbers. Go to the next slide, please. I'll, this just shows at least a little bit of the estimated beginning fund balance and ending fund balance. But the biggest thing that I want to point out is the transportation fund. I'm showing a very, very large surplus in that fund specifically, and that's just because when we do develop the tax levy, I request money the year in advance, and I expect to be spending roughly that this upcoming year. Now, based on some of the changing circumstances of the district, I'm projecting a much lower amount. We will still have some expenditures related to transportation, and that'll be related to an agreement that we have with Lakeside, they've made investment in the district. So we will have some expenditures with that regardless of whether we do run routes, or we're able to recoup some of that money with the state regular and special-led transportation claim. But otherwise, there's a lot of normal expenditures and revenues that I am projecting. As I mentioned, the biggest question marks that we are going to face are the evidence-based funding formula. Is there any future assumptions with that that I need to take into consideration? Do we think it's going to remain flat, or will it improve in future years? And with other categorical state and federal grants, are we going to see a reduction or elimination in that? So I do touch on that in some of the other documents that I have. And the other big assumption that we're making is, are there any changes to state property taxes, the biggest source of our revenue? And there's, in Lake County, they did have a delay, and when you can pay your property taxes, there was really a two-month delay, we could split your payments up 50/50 if you don't have an escrow account. So unknown number of participants will be taken advantage of that. And with, you know, the rising unemployment rates, are there going to be any situations where people are not making their property tax payments that we may see a reduction in that amount? Right now, I'm projecting a slightly less collection rate than I have in years past, but in the end, there are a lot of assumptions that will change between this tentative budget and the budget that's going to be adopted. So Eric, if you wouldn't mind just going to the end, I'll just talk about just the timeline itself. These, just kind of talk about some of my just general assumptions itself. But today, reviewing and approving the tentative budget is for display. You'll have just over a month to have a chance to schedule meetings and talk about these individual assumptions that I'm making and what we may see in future funding for the state of Illinois. And then we're set to vote and adopt the budget on September 15th. So when I go bring, I'll do the full presentation at that meeting, we'll go through a little bit more of the assumptions and what has changed. And as we get more information, this budget's been changing rapidly since I've started this process. Are there any questions about that? All right, so yeah, I'm available anytime if anybody would like to discuss the budget further, but I'll go over it a little bit more detail when we do have the hearing itself.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to reread the resolution, and that is for action to approve the tentative budget and set the budget hearing date. Whereas ILSC 105-5/17-1 directs the board to provide at least one public hearing prior to final action on the budget, and whereas notice of public hearing must be published in a local newspaper at least 30 days prior to the time of hearing. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District Board of Education approves the 2020-2021 tentative budget as presented and sets September 15th, 2020 at 7:00 PM as the date for a public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget. May I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on our business agenda is approving the roadmap return to school. The resolution reads, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the roadmap return to school plan as presented by the district leadership team. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Lozada?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hale?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we will now be reading the resolution to approve the amended 2020-2021 school calendar as was presented earlier this evening. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the amended 2020-2021 school calendar as presented by the district leadership team. May I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Armenta?
Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Candela? Candela?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the business agenda is the second reading and the approval of the press 104 policies. Before I read the resolution, did anyone have any questions or comments on these? I know we looked at them at our last meeting. No? Okay. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopted policies are provided for District 76 through the Subscription to Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service Press from the Illinois Association of School Boards, IASB. And whereas the policy committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the July 21st, 2020 Board Combined Meeting. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in IASB Press Issue 104. The policies are as follows. Two colon 150-AP Superintendent Committees. Two colon 220 School Board Meeting Procedure. Two colon 220-E9 Requirements for No Physical Presence of Quorum and Participation by Audio or Video During Disaster Declaration. Four colon 180 Pandemic Preparedness Management and Recovery. Four colon 180-AP3 Grant Flexibility Payment of Employee Salaries During a Pandemic. Four colon 182 Policy Face Covering Students, Employees, and Visitors. Five colon 170-AP4 Designation of District Digital Millennium Copyright Act, DCMA Agent Registration Process. Six colon 20-AP Remote and/or Blended Remote Learning Day Plans. Seven colon 40 Non-Public School Students Including Parochial and Homeschool Students. Seven colon 190 Student Behavior. Seven colon 190-AP2 Student Handbook Gang Activity Prohibited. Seven colon 190-AP4 Use of Isolated Timeout, Timeout and Physical Restraint. Seven colon 190-APS Student Handbook Electronic Devices. Seven colon 190-E2 Student Handbook Checklist. Seven colon 220-AP Electronic Recordings on School Buses. Seven colon 340 Student Records. Seven colon 340-AP1-E1 Notice to Parents, Guardians, and Students of Their Rights Concerning Students' School Records. Seven colon 345 Use of Educational Technologies Student Data Privacy and Security. Seven colon 345-AP Use of Educational Technologies Student Data Privacy and Security. Seven colon 345-AP-E1 Student Covered Information Reporting Form. Seven colon 345-AP- 7:345-AP-E2 Student Data Privacy Notice to Parents About Educational Technology Vendors. 7:345-AP-E3 Parent Notification Letter for Student Data Breach. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Lozada?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Candela?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda, we have three new hires. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Candela?
Yes.
Lozada?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business agenda for this evening, moving on to board discussion. Do we have any items for board discussion? No. Great, moving on to freedom of information requests, we have none this evening. And that brings up. Is everybody else there?
Yeah, I think she froze.
Okay.
Our vice president, ready to take over, Mr. Candela?
I was going to say, Dave, I think it's.
So notices and communications, the calendar dates are for the BOE meetings, I don't think anything has changed there, that's standard. Governing board summary. Proceed all the minutes. And I guess are there any questions about those and are those questions that? I suppose Bob, maybe you could answer, or I'm not sure who, if anyone attended those virtually.
I have been.
You have been, was I, so maybe you can answer questions if anyone has any questions about.
I'll try.
I always just include those each month for your review.
And so then that brings us to public comments on non-agenda items.
Here's one. Mrs. Miller, I applaud the administration for their commitment and diligence in creating a thorough roadmap of return plan and BOE. And the Board of Education for approving the move to to full remote learning for the 2021 start of the year.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on non-agenda items? No.
No.
Okay, moving on to others, do we have any others this evening? No.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to share with the board, I know I mentioned it, but tomorrow. It will be publicized, the four attachments that are in your presentation section, so it will be the complete roadmap. The facilitated distance learning academy guidelines with the application embedded. As well as the distance learning academy frequently asked questions, so that'll be sent out to all families and staff tomorrow for with all the details, so I included that for you in your presentation. But that will be made public on our website tomorrow.
Great, I think those documents are really helpful and I think they will answer the majority of questions parents have, at least about. How the school year is going to start and what it's going to look like.
And we'll continue to update, you know, families and staff throughout the process and one other thing, I apologize, is it's not in your presentations, but it was in our board. Action items tonight was the approved 2021 updated calendar, that will also go out tomorrow for families.
Oh, great, great. Thank you. Okay, if no one has anything else, then we do not have any items for executive sessions tonight, so we will adjourn the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Candela?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta? Hale?
Yes.
Hauptman?
Yes.
Kwan? Yes. Lozada?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our meeting, thank you everyone, thank you, Dave, for taking over, my Zoom just shut down.